Hello. Yes, sir?
I am calling the August fifteenth, 2023 Meeting of the Board of Supervisors to Order. The time is 7:00 PM. Before we get going, we have a birthday young lady in our midst, Ms. Kristen Freeman. It's sixteen today, I believe. She is executive assistant to the county administrator, and we really know she's the one that runs the place. So happy birthday, Ms. Freeman. Board, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I vote aye. Motion passes for the agenda.
If you would, please rise and join me in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Wade.
Our Father and our God, Lord, we come before you as your humble servants. Lord, we just ask for just civility tonight as we discuss the county's business. Father, we ask you to give us wisdom to do what's best for the county and our citizens. Lord, we just ask a blessing on all of our military personnel, our police, fire, EMS, just keep them safe. And we ask these things in your son's name. Amen.
Attention. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will move on to citizen comment. When I call your name, if you would, please come forward, state your name, district of residence, and you will have three minutes. The first person that has signed up is Joshua, is it Nicholas?
Knee House.
Knee House. Sorry about.
I'm just here to ask the board to fund the project for the Amherst County Public Schools. As a father of a daughter with mobility issues, it is very difficult to get her in and out of the football stadium, and I don't think she went to see any football games last year after going to see a couple of games the two years prior. It's just very difficult for her to get in and out. I have another daughter, she's right over there, who is in the welding program, and there are eighty kids in the first year of the welding program, but they only have fifteen spots for the second year. So it's very difficult for anybody to get into that second year, and it's something that she's planning on doing. She's been talking about it for years, and she's really, really worried about it. And I've heard that this is going to provide ADA accessibility in the stadium, and it's also going to provide more of the CTE classrooms as well. So I just really hope you guys will fund that. It sounds like a great opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Knee House. Okay, the next person is Abigail Knee House. Come on up, we're not scary. Well, Claudia's a little scared. Hello, Ms. Knee House.
Hello. As he said, I'm going into the welding program, and it would be really nice if there were more teachers and classrooms available for programs like that, not just the welding program, so that more people can go into the programs that they want to and don't have to worry about limits and classrooms or teachers or supplies and stuff like that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Sabrina Kennon.
I'm Sabrina Kennon. I live in District Three, run a nonprofit in District Two, and run a business in District One. The nonprofit that I run in District Two serves businesses in all the county, and I am here to ask you to consider funding the requested school expansion project. Education tends to raise productivity and creativity in communities, as well as stimulate entrepreneurism and technological breakthroughs. All these factors lead to greater output and economic growth. We want to be careful that we don't stifle the talent that we have in our community. So that's really where I'm at with it. The Amherst County Public Schools have a tremendous CTE program with, as mentioned, a lengthy waiting list, and we don't want to stifle that. So just here asking for support for that. We have one high school, let's make it the best we can make it and offer as much as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennon. All right, next is Calvin Kennon.
My name's Calvin Kennon, District Three. I'm here to represent the Economic Development Authority of Amherst County. It is an honor to represent them. We are in support of this project for the schools, the funding, and I'll read you a letter. The Economic Development Authority of Amherst County supports the additional funding for Amherst County Public Schools' high school renovation project. The EDA knows firsthand how inflation wreaks havoc on a budget. Historically, building costs tend to inflate each year, so it's likely that the cost of construction will never be lower. It is startling to hear that without full funding of the schools cannot include additional career technical education classrooms. Very soon, Madison Heights will have over two thousand new rooftops. These homes will bring businesses, and Amherst County needs to be ready. Workforce is the number one issue for businesses, and a healthy school system is a part of attracting the best talent. Amherst County High School CTE program is the best in the region. Our welders win multiple awards in the annual welding wars. Ninety-three students signed up to take welding one, but there are only fifteen welding bays. There is a long waitlist because of the limited space. It is the same with the Certified Nurses Assistant Program. The demand for healthcare employees is at an all-time high, and the current high school facility cannot keep up. New businesses have a choice of where they want to locate and existing businesses or where they want to expand. We have a great education program, but the ACHS building is the physical spotlight of our system and is in need of a significant investment to help retain great teachers and prepare our students for the future. We want our students and our businesses to be proud to live in Amherst, and we need them to stay. The EDA understands this is a difficult decision for the supervisors to finance the additional fourteen million in funding for ACHS, but we believe it is a necessity. Businesses provide jobs, taxes, and economic activity to our community, and investment in ACHS will pay off by helping retain great teachers who provide excellent education, in turn supporting our businesses with the talent they need to grow, which will result in more tax revenue for the county. If we want businesses to continue investing in Amherst County, we need to invest in our students, our high school, and our community. And one thing I wanted to add, I know you all have a potential mechanism, it's a two percent meals tax. This is something that kind of came up late to us. I have received some word from other members of the board who are in support of this. Currently, we've heard back from four of us, and we're all supportive of it, which is not something that normally I'm going to say, hey, let's have a tax increase, but it is the type of increase that could be, it's a consumer-type tax, and we understand that's a lot more controllable. You know, I kind of look at it in my mind like a savings-type tax, where you kind of put money ahead for the future, you know, and I just want you to know that I'm a person that don't have kids in the school system, but I do believe in the investment for our children and our students. Class of ninety, Amherst County High School, went to Amalon, then Meneilson Junior High, when we had the four grades, and then it was under construction when I was there along with you. We were walking on Playboard. I know you guys have a tough job ahead of you. I hope that we, as a community, can rally with you all. I know you all want the very best for our students, and I know you have a difficult task trying to meter this out. I just, I hope we can all just rally with your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kennon.
Thank you.
All right, next is Mr. John Marks.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is John Marks. I reside at 225 Clark Street in Madison Heights, District Five. I'm afraid that my comments exceed the three minutes. So what I would like to do is I will read just some highlighted areas that I have, and then I would like, with the chair's permission, I'd give the clerk a copy of our minutes. I would like them included into the formal minutes for the board. So thank you. I recently decided to look at the approved county budget for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Under the revenue summary page, page thirty-six, I saw a revenue line titled "Use of Balanced Funds" for a total of one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. This summary page also indicated that revenue from the balanced fund was used to balance the budget for fiscal years twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, as well as twenty-four, for a grand total of nine million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Believing this to be the general availability fund, sometime referred to as the unobligated fund, I inquired as to whether or not that was true, and it is. This is money that comes from the unobligated fund, money the county does not have revenue. So I also received a copy of the latest general availability fund dated December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, which indicated there was three million, nine hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars in available funds. These numbers indicate that the county in the last four years has spent nine million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars more than it received in revenue. The remainder comes out of the unobligated fund. So if the one million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars that was used to balance the twenty twenty-four budget is deducted, then the available funds left for the county and the unobligated funds are only two million, five thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars. According to the Davenport Report presented in the package that you have today, August fifteen, discussing the borrowing of millions of dollars for school construction, references pages eighty to eighty-one, the county's debt service steps up and peaks in fiscal year twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-eight. Davenport put together a plan some time ago, I think, targeted reduction of the debt service in fiscal years twenty-five through twenty-eight, and use of one-time reserves to shave these peaks and minimize the need for additional new recurring revenues. One would have to conclude that the one million, three hundred and fifty thousand required for this, to level that out, would come also from the unobligated fund, which would reduce the fund to six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred, five hundred and seventy-three dollars in available funds to the county. These numbers indicate that there is not enough money in the available fund to offset the rise in debt service for the years twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight, and still fund a revenue shortfall as such as seen for the last four years. While looking at these numbers, one could very easily project that the need for eight to ten cent increase in the real estate tax rate to fund next year's budget in the current situation, not considering any additional debt service obligations. I have seen the inclusion of the Gateway Project in the debt service calculation.
That's Mark's. It's gone well over, so if you could wrap it up.
I will. I have not seen anything relative to the three and a half million that we need to borrow to open another trench at the landfill. I understand the debt, and the county's debt service drops considerably in twenty thirty-two, and you referenced page eighty of the Davenport Report. What really is concerning to me is that the data on page eighty-four of the report indicates that in the year twenty twenty-eight, the estimated incremental revenues needed to support the requested school loan takes a tremendous jump for all three of the scenarios. For example, scenario one, the number goes from one hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars in twenty twenty-seven to seven hundred and three thousand, five hundred and ninety-four in twenty twenty-eight. Now, I know these numbers that I'm working with may not all come off of the website, FOIAs, and reports, but I'm encouraging the board to take a very hard look, a very hard look at the county's financial situation before you make any big decisions such as that. Remember, twenty-two people, twenty-two percent of the people that live in Amherst County are like myself, they're over sixty-five years old. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. Next is Victoria Hansen.
Today, I get to speak to you as a citizen of District Three, Victoria Hansen. I wanted to say I am in support of the high school renovation and raising the meals tax by two percent to fully fund the entire project. I know this is a tough decision to make, but it's the right decision. I am a conservative, but I support this tax increase because the need is so great, and the time is now. We need to invest in our students, and that means investing in our schools. We have a great school system, great teachers, but the high school building does not always reflect that. What does the building say about Amherst County? Old, outdated, stuck in the past, or looking to the future? I had two children who attended ACHS, and they talked about the problems. I got to see them firsthand. We definitely need this renovation project, and sadly, when my kids went to other schools in the region, they talked about how those kids looked down at Amherst County, and I think this is one visible way we can change some of that perception and change it for our kids. Amherst County deserves a high school they can be proud of, one that reflects how Amherst County values them and provides a modern, light-filled space to help them learn and grow. Yes, the building costs are high, but they will only be going higher. If we don't build now, when? We have an opportunity to invest in our students, in CTE, in their education, and also in our community, and I hope that you'll look to fund this entire project. As to the meals tax, you know, so many times people go over, our Amherst County citizens go across the bridge over the river and spend money there, and the city of Lynchburg and other regions get, localities get our meals tax. But now, a lot of folks are coming back over that bridge, going to Madison Heights, which is where most of our fast food restaurants and restaurants are, and it'd be nice to bring some of that tax dollars back into Amherst County to help fund this. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Hansen. Next is Mr. Ted Kruger.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm here as president of Buffalo Air Handling over on Zane Sneed Drive, and I'm here to tell you that we would like to support this expansion and the funding that's required. This county is growing, and as someone that moved from the north down to here, school was one of the things that we looked at when we moved, and we need to have a vibrant school that continues to grow to attract families that are coming to the area. We also looking to grow businesses, and as a business in Amherst County, the workforce is a problem. The things that Amherst County High School are planning to do with this expansion, such as the agricultural sciences, cosmetology, nursing, are all growing fields. The welding program they have is second to none. We've been fortunate enough to hire some people right from the high school that have worked in our shop. So we need to grow that. We need to have an area that can supply people to the work, the businesses here. We have a large backlog looking to stay in Amherst County, but unfortunately, we had to find a facility in Lynchburg to expand, to be able to do some of our extra work because we just could not get the workforce here, and I don't want to see that continue to happen, and I want to see other businesses be able to thrive here. So please, vote in favor of funding this project. Kicking it down the road is just going to raise costs. Being in the business I'm in, we see it all the time with supply chains and the cost of goods, so thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's everyone that has signed up. Is there anyone else present that would like to address the board? Yes, sir. Would come forward, state your name and district of residence.
Thank you, Board. I appreciate your service. Jim Thompson, 214 Camden Drive in Madison Heights. I come here tonight not as part of the Planning Commission, which I'm on, and not because my wife is on the school board. I come here because we moved to Amherst County. Our final decision thirty-two years ago, approximately, was because of Elan Elementary, and our daughters ultimately graduated from Amherst, went on to Virginia and Virginia Tech, two different ways for both of them, but they had a solid foundation, and my wife was an educator for many, many years, and these schools are what brought us here. That was our final, final chapter, interviewing Ms. Nance at Elan. So I do support anything we're going to do that's going to take us into the next evolution. I think that having a chance to attend the baseball games towards the end, I was really proud of our Amherst baseball team. I played baseball many, many years ago in high school, and it still comes back to me when I see baseball players. I'm sure it does with many people, but thank you for your support. Thank you for anything you feel worthy of doing for this county, and anything we can do to help, I'm sure these folks here will do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to address the board? If you would, please come forward, state your name and your district, please.
Hi, Board of Supervisors, Sam Solger, District Two, ACPS Dad. I think there was a really interesting group of people from a lot of different walks of life here in Amherst County that came to speak to you all tonight, and I think that that demonstrates that this is not a partisan issue. You have people with different political backgrounds coming to speak with you, generally all in favor of figuring out a way to do this. So I think that's important, and I want you all to consider that going forward, that this is about going all out for Amherst and not about toeing a party line, and this is the schoolchildren, so I really echo, I want to echo the sentiments of Sabrina, her fantastic comments. I'd like to echo the comments of Supervisor Tucker from last meeting. Why should the kids in Arlington get a Taj Mahal for a high school, and Amherst County doesn't get that? We have one high school. I understand your fiscal conservatism, and I respect your fiscal conservatism, and it's a shame that Amherst gets punished for its fiscal conservatism, but let's go to bat, and let's get legislators and rich men who are willing to go to bat for Amherst, not for party, not for self, but for Amherst. Go Lancers.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else present that would like to address the board? Hearing is seen and done, the citizen comment period is closed. We will move on to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Next thing is an ordinance, 2023-5. Next thing is an ordinance 2023-5, Solid Waste, Mr. Popovich.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this ordinance follows your recent solid waste rate adjustment that will go into effect October 1st. As part of that process, staff reviewed the contents of the ordinance, and there were some technical revisions that were needed in order to bring it into line with current on-the-ground operations. So this is simply a technical amendment to the original ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Popovich. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the ordinance? Is there anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to the ordinance? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion that the board adopt ordinance 2023-5 as presented.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion passes. Next item on our public hearing agenda is ordinance 2023-7, Amendment for Requesting Withdrawal of Public Hearing. Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, board, good to see you all this afternoon. As indicated in the first read at the beginning of the month, this ordinance allows an applicant to withdraw a special exception rezoning or conditional zoning only after it's been advertised and all costs have been paid. This does not allow an applicant to request to go back to Planning Commission. Couple important notes, there's no time limit for when a individual can reapply, in addition to that, if they are heard by you all and denied, they must wait 12 months. Other than that, nothing has changed from the first read. Are there any questions for staff?
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the Planning Commission have an opinion? Do they opine on this?
Correct, yes, ma'am. They recommended approval of this ordinance to you all.
Any other questions? All right, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board adopt ordinance 2023-7 as presented.
Motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. Any discussion? All right, if not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote, motion passes. Okay, next item is a special exception, 2023-316, and Mr. Tim Wright, Mr. Creasy.
Yes, sir, board. As the chairman indicated, this is the request by Tim Wright for a special exception in the RMU-1 residential mixed-use district. The purpose of the special exception is to allow a two-family dwelling that has an outward appearance of a single-family dwelling. The owner, as you can see before here, is currently on our GIs, is Ms. Walton. Mr. Wright has successfully purchased this property, and all of that information has been recorded at the courthouse, it's just not updated yet. The lot size is approximately .29 acres with a single-family dwelling located on it, and has public water and sewer, and is in the county's designated growth boundary for both. The surrounding area, as you can see before you, has the same character as the requested parcel. The property is surrounded by residential mixed-use zone property with single-family dwellings to the left and right of the existing house, vacant property to the south, and Madison Heights Baptist Church is to the north. The applicant proposes to build roughly 2,285 square foot building as shown in the staff report. This is a two-family dwelling. Included in the staff report are the definition for a dwelling unit and family. That's for your reference in making your decision. In addition to that, I'm going to pass around code enforcement about this property. This property has been in code enforcement going back to August of last year. Mr. Nate Young, the county's building official, is in the back if you have any questions about the code enforcements that have been happening at this property, and Mr. Wright intends to tear down this building to build his new one. There are recommended conditions in the item summary for this special exception. I'm not going to go over them, they're pretty straightforward. I mean, at this time, are there any questions for staff? And as also indicated, Mr. Young is here as well.
Board, I have a question. So you said it will look like a single-family dwelling, so I'm assuming it'll have one front door, and the units will be accessed from inside?
Correct. I believe there would be a screened importance with one door and then going in.
Okay. Very good. All right, Mr. Wright, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, we have some other properties also in Madison Heights, and what we're trying to do with myself and my partner with me, and as these houses come up and they're in really bad shape and they really need tearing down, we're trying to buy them up and put something nice, sort of build up that neighborhood because we're more and more invested, and we're at the point now where we're willing to move forward, and as many of them has come available, that's what we'd like to do. And we've had good results with them, and these are all properties that are maintained by us, the lawns, everything, the exteriors, you know, we try and keep them up really nice, and that way, it's not left up to just the tenants to take care of it, but it's actually done by us. So anyway, so we just hope that you can see the benefit of it.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any questions for Mr. Wright? All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone present that would like to speak in favor of the petition? Mr. Marks.
I would like to speak in favor of this. My name is John Marks, I'm in District Five. This property sits right behind the Madison Heights Baptist Church, which I attend. This property definitely would enhance the neighborhood by being disposed of. Mr. Wright has, and his family, have several houses in Madison Heights that they've redone, that they maintain. They've done, I think, a real good job with what they've done with them. So I would highly recommend approval of this particular request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there anyone else present that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Board, what's your pleasure?
First off, Mr. Wright, thank you for all the hard work you're putting in in that area. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve this special exception.
A motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. Board, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion passes. Good luck with your project, Mr. Wright. All right, moving on. That was with the conditions, correct? That was with the conditions, correct. Very good. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Mr. Bryant, did you want to?
Yes, sir, I have one item to address. So there are three items under consent, the minutes, the Personal Property Tax Relief Act, and the appropriation of revenue. There's one change, board members, on Resolution 2023-15R. Ms. Erby contacted me today and said there was a typographical error on the resolution, and so what she would ask us to strike out is where on the resolution that's in your packet says over $1,000 in value would be removed from the resolution, and so I've given you a clean copy in front of you to look at. If you have any questions on this, this is separate of the 20% you did as part of the budget. This has nothing to do with that budget process. So I wanted to make that one clerical change. Any questions for staff?
So the thousand is replaced with what?
So it says for, well, it's for vehicles on the first $20,000 in value.
I see.
Yeah.
Were there any questions on that? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Pugh. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Moving on, this is one of the happier parts of my job this evening. A commemorative resolution for Scott Zion Baptist Church, and I would, Scott Zion is in my district, I had the distinct pleasure of going and celebrating with them, and I would move that the board adopt Commemorative Resolution 2023-4-C-R. Is there any discussion on that? It's a motion on the floor by the chair. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Is Dr. Poindexter here? If you come forward, Dr. Poindexter.
I just want you to know, I brought my glasses tonight, but after I wished her a happy birthday, you can see how she blew it up, so I agree.
Pastor Lee?
Yes.
So this is a commemorative resolution congratulating Scott Zion Baptist Church upon its recognition
as a historical landmark, approved as deformed by the county administrator. Be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia recognizes and congratulates Scott Zion Baptist Church for being recognized as a historical landmark. Whereas Scott Zion Baptist Church celebrated its recognition as a historical landmark on July the 29th, 2023, and whereas the Church and Cemetery Assembly is among the largest and the oldest African-American congregations in Amherst County, and whereas the Scott Zion community emerged after the Civil War and was comprised of African-American and Native American people who desired to migrate away from the agrarian communities along the James River and sought better jobs in Lynchburg, and whereas since 1872, Scott Zion Baptist Church has functioned as the community's place of worship and social center, and whereas the church also attracted congregants from San Domingo, a black community situated two miles southeast of Scott Zion and had never had their own church, and whereas the first-known burial in Scott Zion Baptist Church Cemetery occurred around 1890, and whereas in 1942, the congregation erected the current church building, and whereas in the late 1960s, the stucco exterior finish was covered in a brick veneer, and whereas the church received its National Register of Historical Places designation on March 23rd, 2022, and was added to the Virginia Landmarks Register on December 9th, 2021, and now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Amherst, Virginia, that the Board of Supervisors of the Amherst, Virginia expresses its congratulations to Scott Zion Baptist Church and thanks it for the role it has played in the Amherst County community. This resolution shall be in force and effect upon adoption, adopted this 15th day of August 2023. And I will say, I've had the pleasure of going down to Scott Zion on several occasions, but I've always felt most welcome and appreciate everything that you do for our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
It is a supreme honor for us to be here today, born and raised in this county, product of the Amherst County school system, and I just believe the best about our county, and we want to work hard to make sure that we can do to make our county a safe place to live and a productive accounting where all people are welcome and feel safe. We thank God for the opportunity to worship and be a part of this community since 1872. So we thank God for you. Please keep praying for us, and we're going to do all we can do to continue to support this community, and we want to see the best for Amherst and their citizens. God bless you, and you're welcome at any time. Come on down to see us at 9:30 a.m. so you can still get to your regular church services. So may God bless you and keep you.
All right, okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to financial support for Amherst County Public Schools, we have Mr. R.T. Taylor and Dr. Wells.
Yep. Hello, my name's R.T. Taylor, I'm with Davenport and Company. Thank you for having me back. During our last meeting, we went through a couple generic scenarios regarding the school projects being considered. The county board asked us to revisit those with school staff over the past couple weeks. So I'm just going to go through a couple quick slides to give a little bit of familiarity to the folks in the public. Back in calendar year 2022, Davenport assisted the county with developing a plan based on the school projects for renovating the Amherst County High School. At the time, the original estimate was $13 million. Based on the escalation costs and the full scope of the projects, that amount could be, could increase our potential funding need up to $14 million, but the county and schools are considering options that would reduce the scope of projects. So we have taken that guidance and run four different scenarios, evaluating various project scopes within that range of doing no additional funding, all the way up to doing the additional full scope of the project, which would require an additional $14 million in funding. So we want to make sure tonight that we demonstrate the potential impact to the county's cash flows, given those various funding scenarios. What we'd like to hit on is how we could better manage that cash flow increase that we would incur related to the additional debt service. We do have $10 million in unassigned fund balance that goes over and above our minimum policy target, so this is not saying that we would dip below our policy at all. These are monies that you have available and unobligated to utilize. And then additionally, we've done some preliminary analysis with the help of staff. We believe that there's some other additional opportunities where we could set some of those monies, either all 10 or a portion thereof aside, to be utilized strategically and further invested with the county staff's help. So, and then ultimately, as we show how these fund balance monies are used over time, we also have a plan to replenish them, and you'll see that over a seven-year period, we're using those dollars, and in four years or less, replenishing that back in full. Last bullet here, you may recall in all this planning, developing the strategic plan of finance, we wanted to make sure we don't necessarily overstructure and overdo it now because we know that the county itself has future capital needs. So the way this has been structured is with that in mind so that we maintain our ability over the next several years for the county to implement capital projects that it may need on its side. So just as a reminder, I know you all have seen this quite a few times, but this is the existing tax-supported debt profile of the county. You can see where it steps up a little bit over the next several years. That was a part of that original strategic plan of finance where we implemented the 22 financing. That was the initial $13 million of the of the school project. What's most important here is that big drop. You can see where the graph really drops down quite a bit out in 2032. So with that in mind, we have structured the debt to wrap around the front end over the next seven to seven or so years, and that's where we're going to talk about and show you the cash flows here shortly, how we're going to propose using fund balance strategically through those years to get to that drop-off and get that benefit. But again, to reiterate, we don't want to eat up all of that capacity in the future because we know that the county does have future needs that will have to be met, and we don't want to overstructure the school financing to, that would eat that up. Here is just a quick reminder, the- Here is just a quick reminder, the key debt ratio policies that y'all have in place are tied to your tax base, which that's your debt to assessed value. So what your tax base can bring on with respect to debt, you're at 1.5% or less right now, and your policy limit is 3.5. So you have plenty of debt capacity to bring on in a responsible, fiscally healthy manner. Similarly, your debt service to expenditures, that's what your percentage of your budget that's going toward debt. So only about 4.78% right now of your budget goes to pay debt service. Your policy limit is 10%. So again, you are well less than halfway there. So you have ample capacity with respect to your policy, with perspective best practices, and with respect to the credit markets. This graphic goes back to what I was saying a minute ago. According to that original plan, where we knew we have a pretty level debt service profile over the next several years, we were going to step above that a little bit over a few years there, '25 through '27, with that initial tranche. And then what we said we'd do is use some fund balance or incremental revenues to get through that period, and then wrap it. That's why the light green steps up in 2032, but the dark green drops down really low. So the dark green is your existing debt that drops off, and we have folded in the light green, the new debt, on top of that. So the end result, I think what most people are interested in seeing is how this impacts the cash flows. So again, this grid or matrix shows column A, bifiscal year, column B, what your existing debt service is, and that layers in all the pieces of debt you had before '22, drops in the VPSA 22 series that we did for $13 million last year. And then if you look in column D, that aggregates columns B and C, which again, that's the interim interest on the Gateway Project. The full amount of debt will be issued by the Amherst County Service Authority, and that's borne or covered by the net operating revenues of the Service Authority system. But the county did determine that they would support the interim interest on the Gateway Project to make sure it got up and running. Okay? So net-net, in column D, that is your updated existing debt profile before we bring in any new additional funding needs. Right now, your current budget funds approximately 3.9 million in debt service. That's your budget level, your recurring revenue sources that covers debt. So what we do is do the math between column D and E, and we either have a surplus or deficit. Because our debt steps up from 3.9 million up to 4.3, 4.4, we know we've got to use some monies somewhere, if there are additional revenue sources, through taxes, or whether that's real estate ad valorem, or sales taxes, or we can utilize some monies that we have in our hip pocket, right? The fund balance. So what we did have in our plan from last year is $1.3 million, which is school carryover funds, that the schools and the county agreed could be set aside to help defray those peaks in debt service as we bring on that new debt. So what we were left at the end of the day last year was $182,000 incrementally that we would need over the next several years, '25, '26, and '27. We went into that knowingly. We coordinated with county staff. Some way or another, that is going to be found in the budget. And what we're going to show you here shortly over on the right-hand side in column H is one potential way to do that without generating new tax revenues is to use that available $10 million or up to that amount to cover those one-time needs over the next several years and then replenish it. So for example, if we didn't do any more debt related to the schools, if you track in column H, we would, in 2025, we would use $182,000 of fund balance. The next year, we would use another 182, so total use of fund balance would be 364. So column H is cumulatively what we're using from fund balance to defray the peaks over the next several years. And you'll see by 2031, we've used approximately 930,000 of fund balance. Okay? Then, in the very next year, 2032, because our debt steps down considerably in 2032, we're able to take that drop and use it to replenish even more than what we've drawn down over the first seven years. So we draw down a cumulative total of 932,000. We replenish all of that by 2032, one-year replenishment. Okay? So this is going to be our scenario one to start with, with no additional funding. We'll get to that summary page here shortly. Any questions on that before I move forward? Because that's the pretty significant piece of the puzzle.
No question so far.
All right, move forward.
Okay. So our capital funding scenarios. This chart, hopefully, the audience can see it. It's a little tiny for the line items, but hopefully, you all can see what's included for each scenario or what's not included. We've set it up to be red light, green light, to make it a little bit easier to interpret. So again, if you look in the first column, column A, that's scenario one, no additional funding. So what can we afford? And with school superintendent's help, we were able to determine with their engineers, we're including the auditorium, the new entrance at the rear of the school, the gym, auditorium, and toilet restrooms, concessions, hallway between the auditorium and existing building, site work, parking. So down through there, everything's included. What's excluded in scenario one? No windows, doors. I think that's sort of throughout the whole school. I'm sorry.
Could you speak into the mic for?
Yep, I apologize. It's hard for me to see. Can I move it? Nope, can't move it. I'll look here. That's better. I just didn't bring my reader, so bear with me. So lines nine through 13, you can see what's excluded. The windows, the doors, the CTE wing, baseball fieldhouse, kitchen and dining commons, toilet rooms. So that is the $13 million that you borrowed in '22, plus some additional monies that the schools and the county have available to the tune of, let's say, $5 million. So that gets you to the $18 million down on line 14, and you can see the Series 22 bonds provided about $13 million. And again, additional resources from the schools and county were $5 million. And I keep saying county and schools. Those other funds were from the schools. Scenario number two adds in the windows and doors throughout the school, correct? So that gets renovated, the windows, all the windows and doors throughout the school. And then you get the CTE wing as well. So total project cost for that would be $26 million. Okay? But again, we got $13 million from the Series 22 bonds. We got $5 million from the other school funds. So our funding needed would be $8 million additional. Okay? Scenario three, we get the fieldhouse in addition to the others. That adds another $1 million. So you're at $27 million, and you need an additional $9 million in funding. Then lastly, for the full scope of the project with everything included, that would be $32 million total. You would need $14 million additional funding. Okay? Any questions on how we've laid these scenarios out? Or everybody tracking with, is this measuring what you all sent us back to the drawing board to make sure we had?
One question.
Yes, sir.
What you're showing there, does that account for the costs that have already been spent as well?
Yeah, I mean...
The remaining funds, I've already pulled $1.2 million out from the remaining funds, as well as the 1.354 that was set aside for debt service.
Thank you.
The next page. This is a summary shot of that detailed matrix I showed you with the cash flows on the far right, what we would need each year. Scenario one, again, no additional funding. So the cash flows are going to be the same, '25, '26, and '27, '28. We need the 182, 289. And then in 15 and 16, and, excuse me, lines 15 through 17, we step down. So again, we've only used a total cumulative amount of 932,000 from the unassigned fund balance, and then we're able to replenish it the following year. If you look, you can see by scenario what our incremental needs are by year. I think the key line here is line 18. So when we get to scenario two, we might need up to, you know, $589,000 in a given year, which is in 2028. But over that seven-year period, we only need to draw down $2.7 million of unassigned fund balance, and then we're able to replenish that over another couple of years. And I'll show you the detail slide on that in a minute. I'm just trying to set up the summary so you can see from left to right, we have the option of using 932,000 of unassigned fund balance, or as much as 4.1 to help us get through the next several years that are a bottleneck for us. Okay? And again, some of this use could be offset by strategically investing that fund balance that we're talking about segregating to get a little bit more strategic earnings rate on. Let me skip to the appendix slides real quickly. This is scenario one, and this again is where we use up to $932,000 of unassigned fund balance and then replenish it in 2032. And still in column G, where we have all that green, 2,64, 324, 2,63, 594, and beyond, that's where you have future debt capacity for the county side. So we're not eating up a bunch of capacity trying to structure the school just to get us through the next several years. You have plenty of debt capacity going forward for the county. Okay? Scenario two, you can track on the very far column where we're using cumulatively up to 2.7 million of unassigned fund balance in 2031. And then you can see it starts dropping down thereafter because we're replenishing, and we replenished by 2033. Scenario three, we use up to about 2.9, call it $3 million by 2031, and then we quickly start stepping down because we are able to replenish the use of that fund balance. And then lastly, in scenario four, which is the full scope of the project, you can see we can utilize fund balance to about $4.1 million, and then over a four-year period, replenish that pretty quickly. So seven years, building up, using it to help us defray and shave, and then shortly thereafter, about half the time, replenishing the unassigned fund balance that we pulled down. And this is silent to any of the interest earnings strategically invested in getting higher interest earnings that we haven't factored any of that in yet. All right, so I'm going to step back up here to the summary. That's where all that information came from for the summary purposes. Again, the key line there is line 18. We can do all four scenarios, no additional funding or 14 million in funding. We just have to potentially use unassigned fund balance to the tune of, call it $1 million to $4.1 million. So for our observations, like I just said, all four scenarios we've shown can cash flow if we use fund balance strategically. And we're not talking about dipping below our minimum policy levels or anything. We are using fund balance above and beyond your minimum policy targets. You can, we can also enhance this cash flow picture by strategically investing those unassigned fund balance monies. And then again, the range, using that range over the next seven years could be anywhere from $900,000 to $4.1 million. And then we can replenish it in half the time. Any questions? Okay. That's it, unless you want me to stand?
I'm sure we'll have questions in a minute. Dr. Wells?
All right. I don't know which one is yours. Okay.
R.T., thank you, and board, thank you for having us here tonight and having taken a chance to let us come back before you again. So as we talk about the project, this kind of takes the information that Davenport just presented to you, but in a different kind of scope. So again, for 18 million, what we can do and what we can't do. I think he hit that kind of hard, hit that well. But again, we give you auditorium. We have to design a new entrance to the back of the school. Regardless of whether we do the commons area or not, we still have to have a door to the back of the school. And that's going to cost money. So that's going to be, so we still have that. We still need to put in, based on the requirements under code, we still have to add restrooms for the auditorium seating. So we still have to add restrooms for that to meet code. The concessions in the lobby, we'll put those in the hallway area. We have to have a hallway going between the auditorium and the gym, and we need the site work and we need the parking. So we do all that for 18. Plus, I'll throw in my 2.2 million of window, door money to make sure we have enough funds for there. $3 million additional. Again, the project is scoped here. We get the auditorium. We asked for, you asked for this. I'm just giving you this. We can do cosmetology lab, and we can put the windows and doors back in to my budget for all the schools in the county versus just having them, those funds going towards the high school. Items cut again from this will be the CTE wing renovations, the foreign language labs, the kitchen and dining commons, baseball, softball, fieldhouse, and toilet rooms. If we go with the $8 million scope here, puts us at 26 million total. I can get you everything that we talked about minus the dining commons and kitchen, and minus the fieldhouse. For the additional million, I can get you everything but the dining commons and the kitchen. And then for 14, I can get you everything that we talked about previously. This is a rendering of the original plan for what the back of the school would have looked like if we funded fully at 14. So you can see we have the auditorium to the right with the A on it, and all that glassed-in area is the dining commons. That's what the rendering would be if we go full funding. If we cut it back, this is another rendering of that from a sketch standpoint. And here you can see the dining commons, the entrance to the school, come in the back door, and where the auditorium is, the hallway going down and so forth. That's the area. Again, we'll have to cut, that area will be scaled back if we don't get the full money, and we'll have to have a door moved up. So this next drawing will kind of show you what it would be without the dining commons. You can see the auditorium. You can see we have to put a door in, vestibule in, safety vestibule in, right there at the corner, and we'll have the hallway going up. The area that is hashed out is the existing cafeteria and kitchen. That does not get touched. And then depending on funding, if we don't get any additional funding, the work in the old auditorium would not occur because we don't have the funding for that. But if we get additional funding, we can do the old auditorium, put classrooms there for foreign language, and that allows us to renovate the CTE wing and do all that work there for the eight to nine million dollar range there. And the reason, and also some of the parking. The reason I show you this, you can see a comparison of what we have. I also want to show you this. This is today. This is 200 freshmen. That's what's in there. It's 200 freshmen. That's our cafeteria today. That's just 200 students. We just typically have 350 students in that cafeteria on any given day. Any lunch, three lunches, 350 a lunch. And that's just 200 today. From this angle here, it's the back of the cafeteria looking towards the serving lines, and you can see it's, you don't have line of sight across the whole cafeteria. So from a safety standpoint, that's kind of what we face. We don't have, from a safety perspective, we can't supervise a whole cafeteria. If I'm on one side of the cafeteria, I cannot visibly see over here to the corner. So that's important. This is another view, looking to the serving line, again, with our 200 kids that were there today. And again, tomorrow, we'll have 350 per lunch. So I just want y'all to see that, so you kind of know the reason why we're asking. It is needed. I also understand your perspective from the county side of where you are with making these decisions. I do thank you for all the support you've given us since I've been in this position over the years. over the years here in the county, and I think we've had a great partnership, and I know it's a tough decision, but from my perspective, I have to seek out what I feel is best for the school system, the role I'm in, and I feel this right here best serves our students. So I answer, I take any questions you may have.
Questions for Dr. Wells right now?
Uh, one question. So on each of the scenarios, you had the parking, is that the extra parking that?
So what we would do to kind of save some of the money because of the work at the Burley property that came in from the, from the stormwater retention and other work there, we put some parking there, but as you can see, possibility of what we could do to help save some money is put some additional parking in front of the school, either on the end towards the best entrance to the high school front or the other end towards Lansford Lane, if we, to help mitigate some of the costs of paving and site work on that slope. So we have some parking in the back, but also we could put some parking in front if we had to, to help mitigate cost.
Any questions for Dr. Wells? Thank you, Dr. Wells.
Thank you.
Mr. McBride, could you come forward, please?
So I have a question. So I think it's been referenced several many times tonight that there's like 10 point...
Yes, so we...
How many million, 10 point?
It's right around 10. It's just shy of 10.
Or...
We're gonna go with 10.
Let's say $10 million. So it's been inferred tonight that that's not actually there.
So...
Explain that for me, please.
We just got the audit back, and so I was able to put in the new audited number, which proved that we had added $5.8 million to our fund balance last year in 2022. That was due to all the ARPA monies paying for other things that we would normally use operating money for. We were able to save all that money. So that added back to your fund balance a lot. I don't know, I haven't looked at the ad for 2023 yet because we're still trying to close out some things, finish up payables and that kind of thing, but I anticipate another million to do, at least.
So the $10 million is there?
Yes. The original report that I've produced on, in December, I still had an estimate in there for the June 30th, 2022 number.
But the audited number...
The audited number shows that we start with 25 million, we take out all the reserves, the 15% policy plus all of the reserves, and then we still have the close to 10 million left.
All right, question. So you're saying in our unobligated reserve, we have $10.8 million?
9.8.
All right, and this include, is this, there was assigned and unassigned items in the unobligated, is that taking out all the assigned items?
Every one of them. And everything that you all spent in 2023. Like different things that we had to come back and ask you for, emergencies, that kind of thing. Any supplemental or CIP, which is, that's the use of fund balance in your budget, it is strictly for your CIP and your supplemental projects, it is not to balance your operating budget.
All right, so Mr. Marx said we had had a general availability fund dated December 31st, 2022. I think you provided that to the board, and at that time it was about around $4 million. So since...
Correct.
2022, we took 1.9 million out of that for capital improvements, and we've still gotten back up to $10.8 million.
Yes, sir.
And you're saying the majority of that is coming from funds that we spent through ARPA, stimu, from the federal government?
Being able to save it, mhm, and additional personal property revenue that was above what was budgeted.
Yeah, yeah, it's just hard to, it's kind of hard to believe, you know?
Well, I was a little surprised, but that's the number, the audited number, and once they move stuff around based on ARPA and grants and things that have to be deferred, that's the money that got added.
So what's the real number, 9.8 or 10.8?
9.8. I'm getting ready to try to bring up my report now that I was working on.
Sorry, Mr. Pugh. Okay. Any other questions for Ms. McBride, Ms. Tucker?
No, I have a question for Dr. Wells. Dr. Wells, what's the status of the $5 million grant that we were going to apply for a second time?
So it comes available early September according to the state. We will apply when it comes available. I'm hoping I'll know something October, November timeframe, but if we can apply on it, they said it will be posted for application early September.
All right, and we're gonna hold Mr. Pugh to his word that he's gonna help shepherd that thing through as much as he, as he can.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
And I know that his hands are somewhat tied, but we'll count on him to help us out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Chairman, I had a couple of things. So the county has provided $13 million to the school system for this project. We did that at budget time, and you know, thinking that we would be able to receive the grant and the project would be able to take off. All right, at our last meeting, I brought up the 1% sales tax. According to our representative, it is not available because the representatives in Richmond do not believe, they do not support that, although I think it would be a vote by the citizens of the county, therefore it would allow the citizens to decide whether or not we want a 1% sales tax to fund school infrastructure going forward. So that's something that can still be pushed for in the upcoming year. The grant from the state, which we just discussed, was not approved. The current cash flow, without the use of our fund balance, is not, not sufficient to carry the extra debt. I don't like playing musical chairs with our fund balance. You know, we're talking about going all the way out to 2032 and then refunding our balance. I have somewhat of a heartburn doing that. That's, uh, we don't know what may come up or what's unforeseen or what may happen. You know, that money could come in handy. Also, there are other priorities that the county will need to take on, such as our landfill, other capital projects, or things that we currently aren't even, or unplanned for. So, uh, you know, if we do use our fund balance, I think we're somewhat playing with fire. I know an option that was brought up last time was a 2% increase in our meals tax. Now, we haven't discussed that tonight. I don't even know what type of money that would bring in. Uh, I'm opposed to that. I don't really think that's a good idea. I think probably most of your restaurants would be opposed to it as well. Well, that's, that's just some of our thoughts, and we can discuss that 2% meals tax, what it would bring in, if you all have any considerations regarding that.
Okay. Ms. Tucker, any comments?
Not at this time.
Mr. Wade?
Uh, I'll echo what Mr. Pugh said. I'm a little hesitant on adding a meals tax to folks right now. However, I'm not necessarily opposed to tapping into the unassigned funds if there's roughly 10 million out there. I think we can shave some. I get his arguments regarding, you know, the unknown, but at the same time, we added almost 6 million in '22. We're gonna find out what '23 is eventually. I think there's opportunity there.
I just want, actually, I'm gonna change my mind. I do have something to say.
Okay, Ms. Tucker.
I've talked to a number of people about the school, and everybody agrees it's a big number, but it's sorely, sorely, sorely needed. A meals tax is like a user tax, kind of like a toll road. You go on it, you pay. You don't, you don't go out to eat, you don't pay. I think it's a very fair tax. I've talked to some of our restaurant owners here, and I haven't found anyone who was opposed to it. You go to McDonald's, you buy an average meal, it's 20 cents. We're talking about 20 cents. I don't think anybody's gonna, is gonna go broke over that. And I think if we tell our community that this money is being dedicated to our high school and our future, quite frankly, I don't think you're gonna get too many, too much
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. My thoughts are varied. You know, in Amherst County, if you look at the things that we do as a local government, we do a landfill, right? We do law enforcement, we do fire and EMS, and we do schools, right? And we do parks and rec, but I wouldn't say we do it really well, no offense, but we do parks and rec, right? I've said many times, when I leave this earth, the only real legacy I'm gonna leave is my children, right? And all of my children will probably be, I've got one left in the high school, she'll probably be out before this is ever built or finished. But I think we as a locality, we as citizens have a responsibility to our future generations, absolutely. What I think we need to decide tonight is, because Dr. Wells, I cannot fault you, you know, you came to us a year and a half, two years ago, whatever it was with prices and inflation, cost of materials, cost of labor, all of that has gone up. So, you know, I can't really fault you that the project has pretty much doubled, right? Or almost doubled. I think there is a need there. I think there is going to be a continued need in our education system. As our county continues to grow in our southern part with new residences, you know, I think that's gonna have effect on our schools, our elementary schools, our middle schools. Might not be immediate, but it's going to happen, and we're going to have to plan for it, all right? So, and, and again, I think our county needs to grow because I hear all the time, well, we want this restaurant, we want Chick-fil-A's, and we want this, and we want a Kroger. Those places do not come unless you have the rooftops to support them, okay? I've been doing it for 30 years. They do not come unless you have the population base. So if we want to grow, we're going to have to increase our population, which is going to create demands that we, we as a local governing body are going to have to deal with, one of which is schools. So I think the first thing we as a board need to come to terms with tonight is what, if any, of this project we continue with. My personal opinion is we should move forward with the entire project. It's not going to get cheaper. The needs are there. I was in the school last week for the open house, whatever it was, where you go around and see your teachers, and I could not believe that that cafeteria is that small. I don't think it was that small when I was there. I know I'm bigger, but you know, um, you know my feelings on the fieldhouse, you know, we just, I, I think we need to move forward with it. So I think that's the first decision. The second decision is how do we pay for it? I think we've been presented at least two different options on how to do it, possibly a third with the sales tax increase. But I think at some point, it's our responsibility as a board to make some tough decisions. You know, if it gets us there tonight, Mr. Wade, to do the, take it from the reserves and that be our financing plan, so be it. I, I think that is a stopgap measure. I think at some point, we are going to have to set aside a dedicated revenue stream for capital projects, whether it be the 2% meals tax or whatever, that's probably the easiest. And as Ms. Tucker said, you go out and you buy a $10 hamburger, it's 20 cent. You know, 20 cent. I believe a 2% meals tax would increase, would raise an additional, what, 600 and some thousand dollars annually, which would help us with our future capital needs. So I think that the 2% is a, something we can talk about later if, if we choose to move forward, but I think we need to make a decision on this and, and move forward with it. Mr. Taylor, I don't think it matters whether or not we do the meals tax option or take it from the reserves right now, right?
No, sir.
And informational, all right, okay. So that, that's kind of where I stand on, and I think we need to move forward with the entire project and take care of our future needs for our children. And, you know, Buffalo Air Hand, thank you, sir, for coming. Absolutely, and, and, you know, we talk, I'm sorry, I'm gonna shut up after this, but you know, we talk about all the time that we want our children to grow up and to be able to come back or stay in Amherst and get jobs.
Yep.
Right? When are we gonna put our money where our mouth is? Right? When are we gonna do that? Here's a man telling us he can't get enough trained people. He's gotta go over to another locality. So I would, I would support this fourth one.
I'm with you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've looked at it, and it's like, okay, if you cut, what can you cut? And those windows, people say, well, cut the windows. Those windows will fall down on children's heads. I'm not joking, they will, that will actually happen. I don't know if any of y'all have been in the bathrooms, they're scary. They're just plain scary. We can do better.
Mr. Bryant, do you, do you mind if I put you on the spot?
Yes, sir.
So I, I'm not asking you what, you know, what level of funding or so forth, but as far as how we fund, if we were to fund this, I mean, do you have a particular way that it would be funded? Now, I do agree, I think a, a meals tax would be much better because it is a consumer tax. I, I don't want to see real estate taxes continually go up. I know Miss, the gentleman from Buffalo Air Hand said he came here from up north, but I mean, up north, the real estate taxes are extremely high, and that's what drives a lot of people away from up north is having a lower cost of living. And so we want to continue to have that here in Amherst County and in the state of Virginia. And so I would, I do think that that would probably be a better way to, to fund things. I, I don't know about this stopgap measure, I think Mr. Martin is right as far as that's concerned. There is money available to do that. You could do it, but I, I think, Mr. Bryant, maybe you would like to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. So a lot of the points you've, you've mentioned have been covered. I'll reiterate a few things. Number one, what we want to do is to give you some different options for funding. So certainly from the fund balance is, is an option. I don't know that it's staff's highest priority is to pull from the fund balance. That's why we did discuss this meals tax. I will reiterate that Amherst County is at 4%. The town of Amherst is already at 6%, and the city of Lynchburg is at 6.5%. So from a competitive advantage or, and or disadvantage, what we would request would be to go from the 4% to the 6%, would be the same as the town, still less than the city for the meals tax. Each percent would generate approximately $300,000. So to going from 4% to 6% would get us roughly $600,000. And what that will allow us to do is not have to pull from the fund balance because we would get some savings on the front end, where then we could roll them in on those heavy years that Mr. Taylor talked about, those four heavier, larger years. Another thing from a strategic planning standpoint, and one of the things that we've looked at from a staff standpoint, is we are going to grow. We've approved some big developments in Madison Heights, the Madison Heights Town Center, the Amherst Senior Living Facility, and some townhomes off and near Dillard Road. Staff's also working with some other applicants for other properties that are within our growth boundary. So Amherst County is being highly looked at right now. And so we do believe there's gonna, we know there's gonna be more needs for future capital improvements. I've met with Dr. Wells, talked about some potential needs at Elan Elementary School. It's been brought up tonight, we will be planning for landfill cell two expansion. There'll be always maintenance of buildings and parking lots and fields, so we're gonna have a need. So staff does recommend for that reason, looking at the, that meals tax from 4% to 6%, and dedicate that as a dedicated funding stream to capital improvement items, because that's something that I think we can do a better job of, of making sure that we have a dedicated revenue stream towards capital improvement items. So I think from a, when we look at advantage and disadvantage, I think going from 4% to 6% keeps us, even with the town, still below the city. It also allows us to create enough funding to fund this school project, and then it puts a dedicated revenue stream in place for any future capital improvements. Does that answer your question, Mr. Pugh? Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Pugh, I will say that from... And, Mr. Pugh, I will say that from day one, since I was on this board, I've been right beside you on working hard not to raise our real estate taxes, and I will continue to be with you right on that. I think in the four years since I've been on this board, the, uh, we did a cigarette tax, which brought in, whatever it brought in, 500,000, something like it-ish, and now we're talking about doing a 2% meals tax for a very good reason, right? Um, so I think we need to get on with it, and unless anyone has anyone else's discussion on it, I would put a motion on the floor that we fund the full 14 million request and that we, uh, direct staff to advertise a 2% meals tax increase. And if that does not pass at a later date, then we'll have to pull from reserves. And that is my motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on. All right. Project status report, Mr. Bryant.
Yes, sir. I have put the project status report in front of you. It's a piece of paper in front of you. There's three things that I'll, that I'll point out that are slightly updates to what you've had in the past. In terms of, you're used to the community, the, the community development block grant. We've worked a long time in Old Town Madison Heights. We are working on a community development block grant. We're gonna hold a meeting at Grace Baptist Church on August the 21st at 7:00 PM, and that's to learn community interest for the new block grant. Uh, we're working on a pre-application now. Uh, the second thing I'll point out is the Lynchburg Road Extension in front of the Amherst Train Depot. That is now open, so I hope you go use it.
Really?
And, uh, it's connected now in front of the train depot. And then finally, I did update you on the new financial software. Our Phase One of the RDA Go Live is being moved back from July 1st to October 1st for a variety of reasons, but that's all internal staff and work right now. But those are three things that have changed since you've seen this last. Any questions about the report?
Board, any questions? Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Uh, moving on, county attorney's report.
I have nothing at this time, sir.
Very good. Liaison and committee reports. Ms. Tucker?
Uh, we had a, a fair committee meeting yesterday. That's going well. Uh, we're still in need of lots of volunteers. We're in need of sponsorships, so anybody that wants to do those types of things, get in touch with Eric Bowen, please.
Very good. Uh, next is Parks and Rec. Uh, I'll just hit a few highlights because our, um, committee chair is here with us and is gonna give us an update, but, um, the Parks and Rec Board continues to meet monthly. They are offering some, uh, new trips that we hope our citizens will take them up on, including a trip to the National D-Day Memorial, Peaks of Otter. They're cosponsoring a fitness fair to be held at the high school in September, which I think I need to go to. They're working on the county fair, continuing with the Halloween Spooktacular, and are working on a separate boys' and girls' basketball league to try and get more girls involved, correct? And very exciting, um, September the 5th at 6:00 PM will be the dedication of the Sarah Lou Christian Trail at River Edge Park. So they will be dedicating that trail, and I hope the board can join us all there as we dedicate that trail to Sarah Lou. Is she still here or did she leave? Oh, there she is. How you doing, Sarah Lou? And, um, thank you for all that you continue to do for Amherst County, Sarah Lou. So with that, we'll move on to the Recreation, Parks and Tourism Annual Report, and that is Ms. Bailey Angus and Mr. Randall Nixon.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I'll now present the annual report. Under sports, we have fall soccer, had 248 registered participants and was sponsored by Motor World. Fall Amherst Challenger Soccer had 10 registered players. Adult pickup soccer had 36 registered participants. Basketball had 271 registered participants, and Amherst Auto Entire sponsored the program by buying brand-new basketballs. Spring soccer had 304 registered participants. Elementary school track clinic had 10 participants, senior adults. The senior center, which now meets at the Monroe Community Center, has averaged 79 participants a month. The senior center in Amherst is meeting at second stage and has averaged 110 participants a month. Senior center trips take place once a month, and they have gone to Roanoke, Farmville, Lynchburg, and Charlottesville. We also help sponsor the senior luncheon six months of the year. We have averaged over 175 participants at the senior luncheons in 2022 and 2023. Bingo has averaged 123 participants per month in this fun activity. Pickleball, this program has averaged 45 participants each month on Thursdays this past year. Aging Well-Exercise Program, the class has averaged 33 participants per month over the past year classes. The Amherst Arts Society has averaged 80 participants a month. Adult art class has four registered participants. Line dancing has averaged 10 participants on Monday evenings at Coolwell Community Center. Round dancing meets at Coolwell Community Center on Tuesdays, averaging 14 participants. Square dancing has averaged 12 participants a class on Thursdays at Coolwell Community Center. Special events. Halloween Spooktacular had over 250 participants. Amherst Arts Society, Hottie Arts, and more has 75 participants. Recreation Department Open House had 50 participants. Pony River By and Triathlon had 19 participants. Easter Extravaganza was held at Coolwell Park and had over 250 participants. Outdoor Expo had 435 participants. The senior center's yard sale had 115 participants. Movies in the Field have averaged 120 participants. Locations. Coolwell Community Center, we had 43 rentals for the year, and this continues to grow. Monroe Community Center groups that use the Monroe Center are Amherst Arts Society, Senior Center, Girl Scouts, Amherst Knitting Group, Blessed Driving School, Democrat Party Meeting, public voting location. Theme park ticket sales, July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. King's Dominion, 480 tickets sold with 19,182 collected. SeaWorld and Bus Gardens, 205 tickets sold with 12,614 collected. Night fishing permits, county 11, non-county 18. The recreation department applied for a land, water, and conversation fund grant through the Department of Conversation and Recreation for upgrades to Seminole Park and Mill Creek Lake Park. We are still waiting for confirmation from the National Park Service and DCR on whether the county will be receiving any appropriations for these two work projects. Mill Creek Lake Park has had a tremendous amount of usage this spring and summer because of the beach area and the addition of the new water swing. We have heard very positive comments concerning the park, and as we add more amenities, it will become even more popular to the public. The park attendants who work several hours each day, Memorial Day through Labor Day, are doing a good job keeping the park clean. They have assisted in heading off potential problems and issues associated with the park. Tourism. A 30,000 VTC marketing grant was acquired this past year, and a 15 and 32nd promotional advertisement for TV and social media was created and produced. The TV ad will be shown in the Charlottesville, Farmville, Roanoke, and Danville viewing areas. The ad will be placed on Facebook and Instagram as well to promote Amherst County. The grant has also provided funds to upgrade the tourism. Visit amherstcounty.org website through search engine optimization, making it easier to access and more prominent when Googled. The department is currently working on contracting with a company to do a five-to-ten-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The future of the Amherst County Recreation, Tourism, and Cultural Development Department is looking brighter, and through this master plan, the hope is to create and provide quality programs, activities, and parks for years to come.
Thank you, Ms. Angus.
Any further questions?
Is there any question?
I do have one question. As far as the, uh, ad on social media for tourism, any idea when that'll go out?
Um, it should come out pretty soon. It's actually been developed. It's actually going out to the areas that we were talking about in Danville, Farmville, Charlottesville, and everything now, the 32nd ad. Um, we've got a 15-second one and a 30-second one, and I've gotta get with joy. I was kinda waiting, 'cause I'm trying to pay off the grant as we go along, um, and the, like, the search engine optimization is over, like, nine months, and I have to pay each month. So I'm trying to pay that down a little bit, do the ads, and then we're gonna do the Instagram and social media ones later. And we've got up till June, I think it's June of 2024, to spend the funds.
Okay. And the reason I ask, I had some citizens reach out and wonder what's going on there as far as...
Okay. Yeah, it'll be coming out soon.
Why they don't see many ads out there.
Right. We're working on it, so, just getting there. Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Nixon or Ms. Angus, could you give us a little more information on where we are with the master plan prep?
Yeah, um, we're actually having a meeting Friday, this Friday, the 18th, at 1 o'clock, uh, so to get presentations from some of the, uh, folks that put in bids, and we've got a team put together that's gonna be, uh, asking questions and, you know, getting that, picking the current or the next contractor for that. Um, hopefully over the next year, have someone in place to do it over the next year, to do the town hall, town hall meetings, probably some stuff online where the people can go in and give their input. I've really tried to spread that amongst some of our other programs, let people know that's coming, and I'm getting some positive feedback, so, yeah.
Outstanding.
Okay.
Get your new bus?
Yes, we did. Thank you. I'm glad you asked that question. Uh, yes, we did. We actually took it on a trip. Um, I drove it. Um, we had to go over the mountain to Lexington with our seniors.
Did the bus come back in one?
Yes, it did. Um, I'm not sure the participants did. They were holding on to the seats going over that mountain, but, uh, yeah, if you've never driven a bus like that with people in it, the responsibility and stress is, especially over a mountain, you know, when you're, you're looking at the people in the back as you go around the curve, you know, and, uh, you can see them as you go around. But no, it was, it was a good little trip to Lexington and, um, the seniors. We had a full bus, and, um, from what I understand, the Peaks of Otter trip that you mentioned, it's already full.
Wow.
So, um, we're talking about, we've got our old bus, so we're talking about maybe taking both buses if we get enough. So that's the goal, is to try to increase our numbers, increase the participation, and, um, if you have a CDL license, wanna drive a bus, we could use you, so.
Very good. You got your CDL?
You got one of those? Who, you chair?
Not yet. I'll get one of them.
Uh, no, I'm not driving a school bus. No, no, no. No, no.
All right. Thank you for the, the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
I mean, you're doing great things, and we appreciate it.
Well, I would like to say, um, I went, we had our advisory board meeting last night, and I went over the supplemental and CIP budgets that affect our department with the, with the board, and, um, I wanna thank y'all for the support you've given us. It's, it's been amazing, and I hope, um, I hope I can live up to it. I hope I can do what, what the citizens need and want, what you guys want from me, so...
I think you can. Board, any other questions? All right, thank you so much, both of you. All right, moving on, we're back to citizen comment. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Dr. Wells, if you ask for any more...
I just wanna say, on the, on behalf of the school system, I just wanna thank you for your support tonight, and, uh, we greatly appreciate it. I know it was a difficult decision, but thank you, and, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna be a good project, and we'll make you proud, so, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Yes, sir. Could you state your name and district?
Chris Terry, District 3, Chairman of the Amherst County School Board. Mr. Pugh, thank you very much for bringing up the points. I'm with you 100% on being fiscally responsible for our county. You guys did a great job. You're investing in our students. They're not just students, they're future citizens of our county, and we wanna keep them here in our county. We're gonna do that by having a great, improving on a great high school. So thank you very much. Have a good day.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? All right. Hearing and seeing none, the citizen comment portion is closed. Matters from the board of supervisors. Mr. Pugh?
I don't know.
Ms. Tucker?
Yeah, one thing, I've had several people contact me about the signs being covered up with kudzu on 130 and other places, but specifically 130, where you can't even see the sign. Kudzu's growing faster than VDOT can cut it back.
Bryant, will we reach out to VDOT tomorrow? Uh, Mr. Wade?
Uh, nothing, sir.
And I have nothing? So is there a motion to adjourn?
No moves.
All right, motion on the floor, Mr. Pugh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Woohoo!
Damn it, that lacaretta meal for four just became a lot, a couple dollars more expensive.